Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Hello, everyone, on this very pleasant September evening. I'm going to walk through how we're going to conduct the meeting this evening so everybody's on the same page and then we'll get started. Okay, so this is the regularly scheduled September 14th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, Chairman of the Commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those in the audience, I'm joined by Rebecca Holman, Mike Slifka, Anna Miskiel, and Mim Evans, I'm sorry, Community Development Director David DeGroot, City Planner Matt Busing, and Assistant Planner Jesse Munsey. And we also have a council here, too. So Scott, Scott Fritz. So he's here, too. Planning and Zoning Commission meetings air live on the Geneva Broadcast Network, which can be viewed on Comcast Channel 10, and ATT U-verse Channel 99, and MetroNet Channel 93, or City's YouTube channel. This evening, the Commission will host a public hearings for Item Agendas 5A and 5B, followed by Site Plan Review for the Agenda on Item 6A. As Chairman of tonight's meeting, I'll guide you through the public and the applicant through the Commission, through the public hearing process, which is outlined in the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further details. The Commission will open the public hearing, and the applicant will provide an opening statement and overview of their requests. Commission members will first have an opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by a public comment and testimony regarding the requests. Audience members will be called on and given an opportunity to comment. If you plan on testifying, please sign on the sheet before hearing, and we'll just take it in order. The applicant doesn't necessarily have to do that, just if the public wants to do that. Audience members called upon will be called upon and given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name and address when it is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made and your request has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. Remind members of the public to refrain from bearing off-topic and bearing from off-topic items and direct comments that are relevant to the requests being considered. Following the end of public testimony, the applicant will have an opportunity to provide a closing statement and comprehensively answer questions or respond to any comments made by members of the public. Additional questions or comments may be stated by the Commission, but the public comment will not be reopened. The public hearing may then be closed by the Commission for deliberation on separate requests. Any person speaking during the public hearing agree to understand that anything they say will be considered, sworn testimony, and affirmed to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. As a friendly reminder, Agenda Item 6A does not require a public hearing, that's a Site Plan Review. However, members of the public wishing to make comments or ask questions regarding this item may do so during the public comment portion of the meeting on Agenda Item 7. In order to help the quality of the meeting's broadcast, I'd remind commissioners, they mute themselves except when they are addressing the Commission. Commissioners are also encouraged to state their name prior to speaking and prior to providing a roll call vote to better assist their record keepers, for instance, stocking, yea, nay, or abstain. Okay? Any questions? It's pretty straightforward. All right, very good. Anna, please call the roll.
Mead. Evans.
Evans here.
Slifka.
Slifka here.
Holloman.
Holloman here.
Miskiel.
Miskiel here.
Moran. Stocking.
Stocking here. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Approved.
Second, Slifka.
Moved and approved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next item is approval of the minutes of the August 24th, 2023 meeting.
Moved to approve the minutes of the August 24th meeting, Slifka?
Miskiel, second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we'll move on to our public hearing items. The first one is 5A. It's 304 Deerfield Way. It's a fence height variation. Request is for variation of Section 11-3-5 of the Geneva zoning ordinance to increase the allowable fence height in a corner street yard from four feet to five feet. The location pin is 12-04-330-017, and the applicants are Mark and Laura Waldock. Yes.
I would refuse to say so.
That is very well, so noted. Yes, just have the record reflect that Mim has left the meeting hall and is not present during the course of the hearing. Okay. All right. Very good. So Matt, do you have anything to add for the record?
Yes. So the contents of this file include an application for a variation filed by Mark and Laura Waldock dated July 24th, 2023. It includes the following items: a letter of intent, a response to the variation standards, a plaid of survey, a fence detail, supporting photos, list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, an affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet, providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on August 30th, 2023, for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated September 14th, 2023.
Okay, anybody who's going to give testimony in this matter, please rise so I can swear you in. That's the applicant, for sure. Anybody else in the public who wishes to... Yep. Okay. Do you swear at a firm... Do you swear a testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your name and address and we get started.
Laura Waldock, 304 Deerfield Way in Geneva.
Mark Waldock, same place.
Okay. Go ahead. Carry on with the proposal. What are you planning on doing?
We've applied for a variance to go up from the current 48-inch limit to 60 inches to keep our dog in the yard. We've got about a year and a half old dog, and about three months ago, he discovered that he could jump over the fence. And we warehouse is positioned, there's a sidewalk right by the side of our backyard, and it's very busy throughout the day with people running, walking, walking dogs, biking...
So basically, it's other dogs that he likes. He's a very friendly dog, and when he jumps over, he sits on the sidewalk and waits to play with them, and they can't, their owners just take them away. I mean, a lot of their owners are our neighbors as well, too, so they know him and they're used to him. But I worry for his safety as well, too, and I don't want, you know, him to scare some little kid or to... I don't know, I just think that it's safe. It's a safety issue. Right now, our fence is 42 inches. When we put it up, it was the 42-inch rule. So I can't see him getting five feet, because in the back of our yard, it's five feet, and he can't go over that at all, too.
He hasn't tried.
So...
And there's two dogs in the yard behind us, and he has not tried to get over that fence.
Yeah.
So we think the minimum 60 inches should work. We're very confident that'll work.
Yeah. I mean, and we have bushes and trees that are 20 feet high, you know, right on that same side in that corner. This is like a section of fence on one side of our yard. The other side of the yard, it's all five or six feet. Our neighbors are six feet, and we're five feet in the back of ours. So I don't want to get rid of my dog. I love my dog. Here's my little COVID dog, my little prize. So I would probably get rid of the house first. I know you wouldn't, but...
No, I think it's...
As a new empty nester, I probably would.
Yeah. I'm the one that's been taking him out on the leash for the last couple of months since this started, and the few times I do let him run where I keep an eye on him, sometimes I'm not quick enough to catch him, he still goes over the fence.
Well, usually, one of us stands at the fence and watches out the sidewalk until... But I'm not home very much.
But I've seen some instances where it's really startling to all of a sudden see somebody, see a dog, jump out of your peripheral vision. So some cars have actually, like, stopped almost, and it's...
Oh, you're preyed on the street there, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
He doesn't go in the street, but it just, I think it's unsettling for somebody to see that.
Absolutely.
All of a sudden.
I would jam on my brakes if I saw that happening.
Yeah.
So...
And we're trying to, you know, make it as neighborhood-friendly as we can. Matt had helped me with the new regulations, which I wasn't aware of, where you need the open fencing, and we've got a diagram in for that and how we're going to do it. We've basically got our old contractor ready to go for approval, where we'd buy new pickets, replace the old pickets with taller pickets, but spaced this time.
Yeah.
And that's really the gist of our proposal.
That's it.
Thanks for listening.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners? Okay. All right. I don't have any. I think you gave me all the details I needed.
No, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm a little emotional about it.
All right. Well, here, if there's anybody here in the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay.
Our neighbors had said if they want... I did not know that, when you said before about submitting things, because a bunch of them that are actually directly across, they would be directly across the fence, are like... She was out of town on business, but she's like, "I will send a letter, I will come," whatever. I did not know about that, so I apologize.
Yeah, you can always send a letter or whatever to, you know, on any item that we handle, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it too late for that?
Yeah. Yeah, because we're having the hearing right now, so...
The neighbors we've talked to kind of love the idea.
Can't read it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what do we do now?
I think that's it, thank you, yeah.
Leave then?
No, well, we're not done yet, we haven't voted or anything, so...
Oh, okay.
We're going to deliberate on it now. We've received the testimony, so...
Got it.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. So, Michael?
So to clarify, one question I was going to ask about the spacing, so I saw their fence, and it is solid, and the other fences that I think have been referenced in the area, the taller ones are solid. So, excuse me, I think with the spacing between the pickets, I think it's certainly preferable to some of the other fences, and really, it equates to about the same amount of area that's covered by fence. So even though it's taller because of the spacing, so, you know, so I think it's, you know, I would be for it.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I agree as well. The fact that the spacing kind of takes away from, you know, the height, and obviously, for the safety of others, the safety of people walking their dogs, as much as I know Jackson's probably a really good member of the Pepper Valley Welcoming Committee, I would be for it, definitely.
Okay. Very good. All right. Do I have a motion?
So I would just, just before I make a motion, I would just note that in the staff's report, we did, I think, if you look at kind of Standards 1 and 2 there, I don't think staff fully thought that those were met, just based on kind of a strict analysis of those standards. So in the findings here, if you're going to recommend or make a motion for approval, I would just note that the Commission is finding those standards to be met.
In the motion?
Correct.
Yeah.
We also need a motion to close the public hearing before we get to that stage.
So do I have a motion on the hearing? Deal with that first.
Chairman, I motion to close the public hearing.
My second.
Second, and by Rebecca. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So now we just need a motion on the matter. Yes, Michael?
Okay, I'll be, just want to clarify, though, on the motion as it relates David to it, to the first two findings of fact, to the comment that David had made. So I guess I'm not exactly sure how to say that.
Well, you can go ahead, Matt.
I think it's just important to note that the Commission is finding or amending the findings of fact to vote in favor of those, and finds that those standards are indeed met.
Are in fact met.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion, approve the variation from Section 11-3-5 to increase the allowable fence height in a corner street yard from 48 inches to 60 inches, and noting that the findings of fact, 1 and 2, have been met.
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, if I can... So a couple of things that you wanted, you have to find that all four of the standards have been met. So I think staff is just pointing out to you all that they had made a recommendation, and so at least based on when I was here last time, you would sometimes say, "We hereby adopt based on the findings of facts proposed by staff." And if you did that, you would be saying 1 and 2 weren't met. But here, what you're saying is that based on the testimony that was presented and everything that you reviewed, you're finding that the variation standards 1, 2, 3, and 4 have in fact been met. And if that makes sense?
All right, so I'll amend my motion then, to approve the variance for Section 11-5 to increase the allowable fence height in a corner street yard from 48 inches to 60 inches with the, with findings of fact 1 through 4 all being met.
Standards.
Standards.
Miskiel, second.
Who's the second? Anna, please call the roll.
Evans.
She's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Slifka.
Slifka, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Miskiel.
Miskiel, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye. All right, so it passed. So Matt?
So the next step and final step will be going before City Council. The date for that will be October 2nd, Monday, October 2nd, and it will be at 7:00 PM here. If that date doesn't work, I'll send a reminder email, but if that date doesn't work, we can go to the next meeting as well.
Will we come to that again, Matt?
Correct, yeah.
Is it okay, like, if I'm on call, if only one of us comes?
Yes, it's fine if only one, yeah.
Just somebody here to represent you is...
Okay.
And I'll send a reminder with all the details as well.
Great.
All right, thank you.
You guys are free, you're free to leave, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. It was a terrible day today, so thank you.
All right, let the record show that Mim has rejoined us for Item 5B. Welcome back. So the next item for a public hearing is Item 5B. It's the Roosevelt Great Western Flooring. There's three requests under this hearing. It's a comprehensive plan amendment from single-family residential attached, attached single-family residential to general commercial. It's a zoning and map amendment from D-MHR mixed-high-density residential district to a D-CM commercial mixed-use district. And then the third item is two variations from Section 11-4A-11 to increase the maximum allowance for interior site and corner street yard setbacks. The location is, for pins, is 12-02-354-004 and 12-02-354-005, and the applicant is Emerald RE Holdings LLC. Matt, find records.
So the contents of this file include an application for a comprehensive plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, and a variation filed by Emerald RE Holdings LLC dated June 9th, 2023. Includes the following items: project narrative, a response to variation standards, a plaid of survey dated June 14th, 2023, site plan, floor plans, exterior elevations, a building height exhibit, land use opinion application, stormwater permit application, a Kane County stormwater management permit application, preliminary engineering drawings, a landscape plan, site lighting and photometric plan, an owner authorization letter and proof of ownership, disclosure of beneficiaries, a list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, an affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet, providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on August 30th, 2023, for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated September 14th, 2023.
All right, thank you, Matt. Okay, so same thing on this one. Please rise if you're going to give testimony, so you can swear you in. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, for the record. I'm Vince Rosanova with the law firm of Rosanova and Whitaker. My office is located at 445 Jackson Avenue in Naperville, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the petitioner, which is Emerald RE Holdings LLC. Also here this evening and available for any questions are Josh Voight, as well as Steve Cherico with the petitioner, Emerald Holdings, and then we have Lauren Voight with Great Western Flooring, and then we have our architect, Rob Costello, and our civil engineer, Jim Kniff. As noted in your staff report, the property is located at 122 and 130 East State Street. It consists of approximately 37,000 square feet. It's certainly a highly visible property that you see as you head to and from the downtown area. It sat vacant and underperforming for the last five or six years since one of the homes was demolished and the other home was relocated. At this point, it contributes virtually nothing to the surrounding area. This next slide I put together just to give you a depiction of what it looks like from both State Street as well as Chrissy. I think the notable point here is that there's a significant change in the topography from west to east, which was certainly taken into consideration in the site design, which I'll get into here shortly as well. With respect to the character and nature of the area, there is a variety of uses in close proximity. Immediately to the west is the Warlick Law Firm. Immediately to the east is the Dunkin' Donuts. To the south is a therapy clinic, as well as single-family residences. To the north, on the other side of State Street, is a four-story senior living home, as well as commercial uses, as well as single-family homes. So certainly a very nice blend and eclectic mixes of uses in the area, but to be sensitive to the character of the area, the petitioner, over the last 18 months, has worked very closely with their architect, as well as their engineer, to be very sensitive to the area and come up with a building that complements the character of the area and also fits cohesively within the neighborhood and is also consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. So speaking specifically to the comprehensive plan, this project you'll see tonight meets many objectives of the comprehensive plan. First, it enhances the overall aesthetics of this property, which is a very important gateway into the downtown. It provides a new housing opportunity for folks that already live in the city or folks that want to live or move to the city. It certainly enhances the city's housing stock. It also enhances the city's economy by providing a commercial component on the first floor, which will enhance not only the property tax revenue, but also future sales tax revenues. So some points that I want to hit on regarding the site plan, first relate to the orientation of the building. The building has been oriented towards State Street and Chrissy Avenue, where it will have the best aesthetic impact as you pass by. This allows us to bring all the parking to the rear of the property, where it's not immediately visible, and this building will actually serve as a very important buffer to State Street, blocking the residences to the south from the noise, the activity, the glare, the pollution associated with all the vehicles going by on State Street. So certainly a good thing to buffer and protect that neighborhood. I'd also like to point out that the curb cut that exists to State Street today is going to be removed. That certainly enhances circulation, improves safety in the area. The project will be loaded from Chrissy Avenue, which is the optimal location. That's been reviewed by IDOT, as well as the city engineer. Ultimately, they love it when you eliminate curb cuts off a state route. That's certainly a good thing. And the petitioner will also be installing sidewalk connections along Chrissy, as well as State Street, to enhance pedestrian connectivity to and from the downtown. With regard to circulation, it complies with all city turning movements. You could see here that the circulation point comes in off of Chrissy. Cars can maneuver the parking lot very easily, out, back out to Chrissy, back out to State Street. Another important point is that visitors to this site have no reason to drive to the residential area. 95% of the trips will be coming right off of State Street, right into the project, and then right back out to State Street with no desire or need to traverse through the residential area. With respect to parking, we meet all city parking requirements. Not only do we meet the city parking requirements, but we looked at other data points as well, census data on vehicle ownership, a survey of similar communities in the Chicagoland area, as well as the Institute of Traffic Engineers manual on parking. We exceed all the data points in each of those studies, so we're quite confident that the parking is going to be more than adequate at all times, and that doesn't even take into consideration the fact that there's going to be a great synergy between having a residential component and a commercial component at the same location. When the commercial component's busy, folks that live in the residences are typically at work. When the residents are busy nights in the weekend, the commercial component is closed, so there's an optimization that can be achieved there. I also like to point out that a furniture store, which is very similar to a flooring store and a design center, is actually one of the lowest traffic and parking generators imaginable. So that makes this use even more perfect of a fit at this location. Typically, somebody coming to a design center, the trips are very few. It's a family, they come in, they spend several hours, they pick out all their finishes and they leave. It's not a high-traffic retail use such as a restaurant or something of that nature. The petitioner has also done a very nice job on the landscaping, to come up with a landscape plan that enhances the overall aesthetics of the building. This is not just parkway trees, but this is foundation plantings, this is very nicely-planted landscape islands, as well as very extensive buffer planting along the property lines. As mentioned in the staff report, we are seeking two variances. The variances relate to the corner side yard setback and the interior side yard setback. As a first for me, typically, I ask for variances to reduce those. In this particular case, on the interior side yard setback, where we're adjacent to the Warlick Law Firm, the code requires a maximum setback of eight feet, and we're asking for permission to go up to 28 feet to create additional separation between us and the law firm, to be sensitive to the law firm, and provide for additional landscaping between that property line. The same holds true for Chrissy Avenue. The maximum permitted setback there is 15 feet. We're requesting permission to go up to 22 feet, so we could provide for additional landscaping, and that will also improve the sight and vision triangles. With regard to the trash enclosure, I'd just also like to point out that this is going to be located towards the east property line, away from the south, away from the west, where we have neighbors, and it's going to be constructed with materials that are complementary to the building for a very nice look. Architecture, this is certainly one area that the petitioner excels as well. They've worked with their architect to come up with a quality building. It's designed to look like a renovated building and also fit within the context of the neighborhood. It has four-sided 360-degree architecture with quality building materials all around that will withstand the test of time. The first floor will consist of about 7,300 square feet of commercial. The primary tenant, Great Western Flooring, will occupy 5,000 of those square feet. 300 of those square feet will be amenity space, which we're still programming for the residences above, and 2,000 square feet on the first floor will be leased to a complementary tenant, which is complementary to Great Western Flooring, ideally, somebody within the home building industry. Then on floors 2 and 3 will be a total of 14 very nicely-appointed residences, and the square footages will range from about 610 square feet for a studio, just to over 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom. So we're trying to provide a lot of variety and options with the residences. This is the, this is the north elevation, which you'll see along State Street. You can see the materials involve stone, masonry, large windows, traditional storefronts on the first floor, cornices, crown moldings. You can see the use of the... You can see the use of the towers and the inset to provide interest in the building, as well as when you get up on the second and third floor, you could see the arched windows for the residences, which I thought were a nice touch. And then here's the south elevation, where you could see the quality materials and the architecture carry around to the south as well. Here's the elevation that faces our neighbor, the Warlick Law Firm, once again with the materials, and then this is the elevation that faces the Dunkin' Donuts, just on the other side of Chrissy. With regard to height, we're also compliant with the city's height requirement of 50 feet in this location. We're coming in at 49, or 49.6 feet. Ultimately, it's important to point out that six of those feet is actually for the parapet, which we've designed to shield the RTUs on the roof, shield the elevator shaft, to really maximize that aesthetic impact as you head into the downtown. You're not going to see those rooftop mechanicals. With regard to lighting, once again, we're compliant with all city requirements. There'll be no light pollution at the property line. We're also using LED technology, which minimizes the potential for light pollution and is much better on the environment as well. Moving towards the inside of the building, certainly our relationship with Great Western Flooring really enables us to deliver interiors that are outstanding. The design center will be on the first floor. These residences need to reflect the quality that the customers are looking for. Some of the features include open floor plans, smart home features, walk-in closets, stainless steel, energy-efficient appliances, as well as full-size washers and dryers in each of the units. And here are some depictions of the project interiors that the petitioner completed in Naperville. That was, too, a beautiful project, very similar to this. It was a gateway project on Washington Street in Naperville. As you pull into their downtown, it turned out beautifully, and these are two slides just showing those interiors. Before we come into the community and request entitlements, we certainly do our due diligence. What we look for is, in the market study, is a demand. There is definitely a considerable demand in this community. Looking at the percentage of owner occupied versus rental available, Geneva has a blend of about 85% owner occupied and 15% rental, which is very high on the owner occupied side. The state of Illinois and nationally is more like a 65-35 blend. So that's evident of a tremendous amount of folks that are going to find this very appealing. And then we also look at the census data on household incomes to make sure that the folks within a five-mile radius could afford to live here, and that is certainly the case. Very, very high average household income in the vicinity. Who finds this project appealing? This is typically folks in the 25- to 44-year-old age category, suggesting singles, young professionals, empty nesters, as well as active adults. Typically, we find that these people have strong roots in the community. They have kids, grandkids that live close by. They're currently living in a four-bedroom, two-story house, which currently doesn't meet their needs, but they like to stay in the community in a safe environment, walkable to the downtown, and this serves that niche. In the Naperville project, it leased up almost immediately, and it remained on a waiting list at all times. We would expect very similar in this instance. Now, with respect to the primary tenant, Great Western Flooring, this is a woman-owned and operated business that has existed in Naperville and St. Charles for 34 years. It was started by dad here, Steve Cherico, and then his daughter, Lauren Voight, who's married to Josh Voight, so we like to keep it all in the family. A lot of people think of Great Western as just a flooring store. They could certainly serve all facets of any sort of flooring needs, but they certainly also pride themselves on their design services. So I added these depictions of the design center that was constructed in Naperville on Washington Street, which was a beautiful addition, very nice to drive by, very classy. We believe it would be a very nice addition to Geneva as well. We want to thank staff. I believe they authored a beautifully written staff report, very comprehensive. We appreciate their efforts to work with us over the last 18 months to make sure that our plan continued to meet the objectives of the city's comprehensive plan. We've also worked with our neighbors, and we're very appreciative of the support letters that we've received. We certainly appreciate your time and consideration this evening, and we're available for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Commissioners, any questions? Not yet. We got to do the commission first. Any, yes, Rebecca?
So I just wanted to clarify, these are rental units, right? These are not...
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so, and so both of the tenants on the ground floor, one is Great Western and then another one is a complementary business, right?
Exactly right, yeah.
So there's not an opportunity for another sort of independent business to come in and potentially take advantage of?
There is. It's speculative right now. It's what you call spec.
Please just identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Josh Voight with Emerald RE Holdings. So that space right now is reserved for a complementary business that is to be determined, right? So our objective is to actually get some type of alignment that is complementary, whether it's interior design, a cabinet store, something that works in kind of synergy with Great Western, but we have yet to determine that, and that would be something, once this project gets off its feet, we would market and then kind of... So yes, there is an opportunity to answer your question.
Okay, and then, sort of in relation to that, with the parking, is there separate parking for the businesses, or it's all, the parking lot is for all?
It's a shared lot in the rear of the building, correct.
Okay. And so was there any thought, I guess, in the beginning? I know that the purpose of the building is a little bit different, but any thought in the beginning about doing something that is along the lines of affordable housing?
You know what? Absolutely. That's something that's very important to us as well, and something that was analyzed throughout the project, and something that's actually been incorporated into the project. So there's two studio units, there's four one-bedroom units, and then there's eight two-bedroom units. And when we talk about affordable, it's certainly not going to be affordable where it's income qualification, or it's certainly not going to meet any sort of affordable standard that would be issued by IDA. But what we wanted to make was an opportunity for attainable housing. If we look at the average incomes in the Geneva area, we look at folks that want to move here or move back, live close to mom and dad, or just getting started out, we wanted to provide that opportunity for somebody that's really in the $50,000 to $75,000 age group, which there's not a whole lot of opportunity for currently looking at the census data. So we've designed two units, which are studios, which are going to allow us to achieve that lower, more attainable price point. So that was something that was also very important to us as well.
So the studio, though, is 610 square foot?
That is correct, yeah.
So that would not really be, like, suitable for a family. It's just for one person making that kind of income?
That's absolutely correct. But this project is something that families do not find appealing for whatsoever. In the project we did in Naperville, over the years, not one family has moved in that has kids, typically families with kids. They're looking for a townhouse, something with a yard, single-family home. Certainly, this kind of maintenance-free living is more appealing to the young professional, the college graduate getting started out, the empty nester, so that's who we try to tailor it to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to follow up on Rebecca's question, and then I had a couple more, and maybe this is more to staff, I'm not sure. But you're asking for a change from the kind of housing you just described as being appealing to families to something that's not appealing, because what is originally in the comp plan is for this to be townhouses, right? So what you're proposing does take it away from being suitable for families. So I don't know whether this is a site that was considered one of the ones on the affordable housing list that we looked at just a few weeks ago. I don't recall. It's not?
No. This one was not on that list, no.
All right. Well, I feel better about that if it wasn't one we were considering affordable housing. You're overparked, as you mentioned. You've got more parking spaces than are required, and then you take into account the coordinated use, so that there's not overlap in terms of parking needs very often. Why?
We always just want to make sure that there's ample parking supply. Nothing is going to cause a tenant not to renew their lease quicker than if there's not parking, and that's applicable on the residential side and the commercial side. Commercial tenants come in and they can't find parking for their guests. They get very upset about that. Same thing with the residential tenant as well. So it's better to err on the side of caution with the parking, and the way that we set up the property, we had the ability to provide for that extra parking. But what's important, though, is in addition to providing for the extra parking, we're also sensitive to provide for enhanced setbacks. So we still have the extra parking, but we're still requesting parking variances to be up to 28 feet setback on the west property line, up to 22 feet setback on the east property line, and we're also exceeding by double the parking setback to the south property line, or not exceeding it by double, but exceeding it. So it's a situation where we can fit that extra parking, and we can provide setbacks in landscaping in excess of what code requires, so it's a best-case scenario.
I'm not convinced that the best use... I think there are other things to think about, other than parking that is probably more than will ever be needed, like minimizing the amount of coverage on the site that is impervious, so that we can have better drainage, allowing some additional green space or additional space for panting. There's no outdoor space for residents, further buffering to the residential area, maybe even integrating somehow the outdoor space in the back end of that parking lot into the residential area in some way. Just seems to me there's better use for that space than parking spaces that are going to sit empty. So that is my biggest concern with this particular project. I think it's a lovely building, and I think it's a good use of the location, so I don't have a problem with that. There was a letter, and I don't know if this is the time to bring this up, but I didn't totally understand, the letter from a neighbor about a piece of the property they had concerned about what was going to happen to it. I tried to follow exactly what they were talking about, and I didn't quite get it. Can somebody explain that?
Yeah, so that just came in today. So that was from the neighbor who, the neighbors who own, I believe it's 24 Chrissy Avenue, so it's just to the south here. From what I could understand as well, they have been, I think, maintaining and utilizing a portion of the property at the south kind of property line. I believe there's an existing fence that kind of squares off the lot, and they've been maintaining that section. So they were alarmed that, I think, the fence was going to be located at the property line rather than further up into the property, so their yard would be reduced, but it's not technically their property.
It's not their property, though, so that...
We received that letter as well today. That was the first we saw of that neighbor's concern. We're certainly going to reach out to them and work with them. This survey here, if you could see at the bottom of the page, you could see a square, and that's kind of where their fence comes off of their property onto our property. Their property has a unusual configuration, so they put that fence to kind of square it off. But ultimately, we're going to reach out to them, because in their letter, they requested a fence. So along our south property line, where they're at, we're going to put in a six-foot privacy fence, and we also then have that 10 to 15 linear feet of additional green space along that south property line, so we hope that they'll find that sensitive to their issue here.
Well, I appreciate your interest in working it out with them. That's great. You have a few substantial trees on the property, or are any of the trees going to be saved?
The trees, due to the topography and the need to grade this property correctly, because ultimately, we're doing underground storage, so we have to make sure that the property is graded, so we have all the inlets to get into that underground storage, that the vast majority of trees on the property are not going to be saved. But on the back end of that, we're also coming up with a very extensive landscaping plan with extensive trees and bushes and shrubberies and decorative plantings, so even though we can't preserve the trees in 10, 15 years, it will look beautiful again.
Along the State Street frontage, will there be signage for the businesses?
Yes, there will be wall signage, which will be in conformance with city code, and we're not anticipating a monument sign or anything of that nature at this point, but there will be very tastefully done signage. I wish I had brought some examples of what Great Western did in Naperville, but it looks very nice.
Okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, just a quick follow-up to Rebecca's question. So how, if we're overparked, and if I miss this, I apologize, but how many spaces?
According to my calculations, I believe that 30 spaces are required, and I believe that we have 42 spaces.
So 30 would be required by code?
And just as a caveat to that, I will say that the city's parking code is lower than what we've seen in other municipalities. Typically, we see two spaces per unit. This particular code only requires 1.5 spaces for studios and one-bedrooms, so just out of an abundance of caution, we parked it more like we would see in other municipalities.
That is almost 50% additional. So I had a similar question that was raised in the letter earlier about that piece of property in the back, and it seemed to be a question over whose it was, but it's clear that it's part of the site. I didn't see a grading plan, and the site slopes back pretty good. Is that slope going to be maintained? Is it going to be flattened at all, or going forward?
You know, I couldn't pass an engineering class, so I'm going to get our civil engineer up here, Jim Kniff, who's going to earn his paycheck tonight.
Good evening. Jim Kniff with Civil and Environmental Consultants. Yes, there is quite a bit of relief on the property. I want to say, just from memory, the finished floor is about 718, 718.5, and then we're sloping the parking lot at a 5% slope from north to south, which is the recommended slope in ITE, Institute of Traffic Engineers, for parking lots. So I think by the time we get to the southwest corner of the property, it is at about 712 and 1/2, so there's probably about six feet of fall from the finished floor to the southwest corner. As Vince mentioned earlier, this is one of the reasons why the trees that are on the property are being removed. Staff and staff's consultants have asked that. We saw cut the property line to avoid damage to the adjacent trees. I would also like to mention here, just a quick follow-up on the tree topic, and I can't remember the tree consultant.
Yeah, his name's Dave, Dave Coulter.
Dave Coulter. He mentioned that the trees are what I would like to call, like, volunteer trees. They're not like nursery stock or anything like that. They just grew over time, and they're of poor quality. From memory, probably like Chinese elm or something of that nature. There's been storm damage to many of them, so between grading the site to make it suitable for future use and the actual poor quality of the trees, it was agreed by all that there would be a need to try and preserve trees. So I don't know if that answered your question or not, as far as the slope, but we definitely have that, looked at that. There's going to be a retaining wall on the west property line to maintain the parking lot slopes, and that also has been reviewed by staff's consultant, as well as the city engineer.
Yeah, thank you. So at the back of the property, it seems like it's maybe coming up a couple feet from former areas now, and it's still pretty low back there relative to the houses behind it. You know, and so, and I noticed that that area is also where you've got designated for snow stacking. So the area up against the residential has probably the least landscaping of the rest of the site. So I guess I'm wondering if that's, if there's an opportunity to reallocate the landscaping possibly to the back of the site and move the snow storage to another point?
We could absolutely, we could allocate some additional landscaping along that south property line. The original concept was we were doing that six-foot fence, as well as leaving an area for snow removal, but ultimately, with that 15 feet of depth and some spaces, we could do both. We could put in the fence, and we could also come up with some landscape materials that will get higher than the fence, and I think that would be a nice touch.
Thank you. Yes, Rebecca?
Just one question for staff, I guess, and then one question for you. Is there a pet policy? a pet policy for the building or...
Yeah, their pets are permitted. And then I'm going to talk to Josh and Steve, too, and just make sure there's no sort of breed ban, because my wife would have a problem with that. She can't take our dog anywhere. But yeah, pets were permitted in the Naperville building, and they'll be permitted here as well.
Okay. And then, sort of to go along with that, was there any thought, you know, sort of piggybacking on Mem's, question about green space or, you know, somewhere for the pets to be able to do their business?
Yeah. Yeah, so along the east property line, that setback area, the turf area, gets to about 22 feet wide. Along the west property line, there'll be green space there. Along the side property lines, we have the nice buffering there where we're doubling a lot of the setbacks. So just around the perimeter of the building.
Okay. And then, is there any plan for like little, you know, where they have the little bag stands and stuff like that, like when you go to parks and they have the...
Yeah, we could do that. Absolutely.
I mean, if you're going to have dogs and you want your grass to look nice, you know, to supply that.
Helps with cleanup. Yeah, we'll absolutely do that.
Yeah, okay. And then I was just also in reference to Mem's question about this property not being considered for the affordable housing. Was there a reason that this was not one of those spots?
You turd it off, yeah.
Still off. There we go. I don't recall off the top of my head.
Probably just size, I would guess. The site's not necessarily large enough to package it up. I don't know. I'm just guessing that might be part of it.
Well, I mean, the last meeting that we had, you know, they made a big point about how the size was, you know, a small, basically a smaller size to be considered for the affordable, or that was the optimal, you know, smaller size. So I was just wondering, what is, how do we make that determination that, like, as far as size or...
I mean, the sizes that we routinely see is like two to five acres is what developers are looking for, and this is still under an acre. So it is relatively small.
Okay.
Just as a reminder, so if, unless I'm missing something, and David, please correct me, but what we're looking at in terms of the comprehensive plan isn't other uses that could be, it could be, but whether, based on the comprehensive plan, what its current use is and what's being proposed as an amendment. And so I think we're a little bit, like last time, we're deviating and saying, well, we could do this or we could do that. I think we want to focus on where it is. Do we meet those criteria to make this change and make those findings, just because that's our role in this context?
So I actually have one more question for you, really about like environmental considerations and materials and different things like that, that have been taken into account with the building materials and different stuff like that. If you could kind of speak to that a little bit.
You know, absolutely. So I'll introduce our architect, Rob Costello, who knows a lot more about the actual materials. I will say that outside of designing the architecture and the floor plans on the interior, we haven't evolved the architecture to the point where we get into the permit plans and identify what we could do from that perspective. But he can give you a general overview.
Rob Costello with Torch Architecture. So most of the benefit would be, from environmental standpoint, would be no maintenance materials. So masonry stone siding, that's no maintenance. Storefront being energy efficient, high insulation value. So the envelope of the building would follow those environmental guidelines.
Okay.
And then with, just to kind of add on to that as well, with the overall site engineering and the stormwater management, we'll be implementing best management practices, which enhance water quality as well as recharge the aquifers. So that's been incorporated into the overall site design compliments of our engineer.
Thank you.
Adam, do you have anything? Okay. I don't have anything at this time. I just think overall, I was impressed with the design. So I was delighted that you put the building in front, which was very nice, and the parking in the rear, which is very nice. And the fact that you have a mix between residential and commercial, also very nice. So that's all I got at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the commissioners? Okay, we'll hear from the public. Ma'am, are you willing to speak?
I guess the public is me.
That's you. You are the... Please come forward and identify yourself, and we'll...
My name is Lillian Obesina, and I'm at 19 Chrissy, which is, I think, that little yellow box by Duncan, from what I can tell. So I guess my... I've got a few questions. It's an empty lot right now, but hopefully I'll...
Ma'am, did you stand up when we did our swearing-in?
Pardon me?
Did you... Oh, you came in. I need to swear you in then, if you weren't here present when you...
Oh, sure.
Do you swear a testimony you're about to give, this whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry for that interruption.
Oh, no problem. So right now, I have an empty lot there, but hopefully in the next year or two, I'll be building a home. I'll probably be in front of all of you for when I do that. Who knows how that's done. But I guess one question I have is, as far as maintenance of the building, since it is going to be apartments and not condos. So with a condo, you might have a maintenance company on site, and things will be taken care of right away. Sometimes, you know, there's actually an apartment that goes to maintenance, and they're right there. So for your building, how would that be taken care of?
Absolutely. I appreciate the question. So it would be professionally managed. So in the last building, it started out with Josh, who is certainly type A personality. He wanted to make sure that everything was right, everything was leased. And then ultimately, at the point of stabilization, all the tenants are in, everybody's happy, you turn it over to a professional management company, and they're very, very responsive. Because preserving the value of this building relies upon the management.
Right.
If you do a bad job managing, you lose tenants and you lose friends in the neighborhood.
Right. Yeah, okay. I guess the other question I have is, you didn't put forth a timeline.
Oh, absolutely. So should everything go favorably, and should we get a positive recommendation, and then a vote from the city council? We would anticipate that that would take through the rest of the fall, rest of the winter. And then we would work on our final engineering plans. We'd work on the permit plans for the architecture. We would submit those to the city. And ultimately, if those were approved, then we would begin construction, hopefully summer, fall. That would start with the underground work, the site improvements, the water, the sanitary, building that detention vault. And then that would take most of the fall of 2024. And then the vertical construction would take about a year after that. So that would put us into 2025. And then I would anticipate that the leasing here would take three to six months. So still quite a lot of work to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I might actually be living across the street before you guys get...
It'll be a race.
Okay. And then, I guess the flooring store is nice, and it won't create a lot of traffic from that perspective. That's nice. I guess I was hoping, you know, as I move in, hopefully that all goes according to plan. But as I move in, that I would have something in the neighborhood where I could utilize a space on a daily or weekly basis. I mean, I might utilize your services when I build my home, but then after that, I'll probably be in a nursing home before I would need your services again. So, yeah, that's my only other comment. I was hoping something would go into the neighborhood that I could utilize frequently.
Well, you have Dunkin' Donuts you could utilize that day.
Yes, yes, I do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate it. Okay, any other comments here? I guess I don't have to do them all, so. With COVID, I always got to remind myself, like, do I have to let people that are online do it? Because in COVID, we are doing multiple back-and-forth, so. But that's not in place anymore, so we don't have to do that. So there's no one else here present to speak on this matter?
Really quickly.
If you care to, go ahead. Yeah.
On behalf of Great Western Flooring, now I'm also with Josh on the development side. But on behalf of Great Western Flooring, I just want to say that for a business to be located in between a downtown business district and a residential district, Great Western Flooring is sort of a unicorn business. We have very low traffic volume, no deliveries, no truck traffic, no smells, no noises. We're just a very, very low traffic volume. Sometimes, on a busy day, maybe there's 10 customers. So it's very, very low volume. They're there. And I know that you mentioned you would like to, you know, this is kind of a love-hate thing when you're near a residential neighborhood. I mean, sometimes people want to have a place where they can go and activities, and, you know, there's traffic and noise and, you know, those types of things. But in terms of peace of the neighborhood, we are really sort of a unicorn business. I mean, we just fit right in, and you just don't know we're there. And that seemed to be the case, or that is the case, I should say, in the last building we did. So, and we hope that the tenant that we have next to us will be similar. So we're not there to be an active place, because we respect the fact that we are near a neighborhood. And so I just wanted to just throw that out there. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Move to public hearing.
Moved and seconded. Anna, please call the roll.
Evans, aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Mataschul.
Mataschul, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye. Yeah, it's discussion time.
Yes, Anna?
I can speak from personal knowledge of their property in Naperville. I was in the multifamily industry. I actually did a redevelopment in downtown Naperville, Napre Place. There is definitely a need for this type of housing. The quality of the housing that they built was substantially better than any type of apartment I've ever seen. So I think this would be a welcome addition to the east side. I really do.
Thank you.
My only concern is the excess parking.
Yeah.
So I would like to see that cut back to what the city requires. Otherwise, project looks good.
You know, I saw some opportunity on the south end there of the property, you know, for getting additional area to buffer the residential. And there's, I think there's like three or four spaces there or something like that. And it's far, it's the farthest away from the building. So it's not like it's...
Yeah, 12 spaces is a lot. There's a lot of room.
Yeah. I mean, I understand what they're saying and why they're trying to do what they're doing, but that's...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I can elaborate on the parking requirements a little bit. Our ordinance has a kind of a parking moratorium area where no additional parking is required beyond what existed in 2001 for commercial uses. So that's where the number 12 comes from in the staff report of the required commercial spaces. Typically, though, for the footprint of this building, the number of spaces required would be four per thousand square feet. So it's more like 28 spaces. So overall, I think the site is pretty much in line with what we would require if we were outside of that moratorium area. I don't think it's grossly overparked.
No, I don't think it's grossly overparked.
But in terms of meeting our minimum standards, within that moratorium area, we are overparked.
Is there parking on Chrissy? There's not street parking on Chrissy, is there?
As you go south, I believe there is some on-street parking.
Like further south, yeah.
And this, as we have stressed, this particular use generates very little traffic, less than perhaps the typical commercial space of that size would.
Yeah, I don't dispute that at all. I mean, they are very, you know, definitely, in terms of the amount of people they come in for that kind of a use, it's not a high-traffic commercial use by any means.
I think to David's point, too, he mentioned there's also an additional space that will be occupied.
Which we don't know, yeah.
Could potentially be a...
It's probably going to be related. It's probably going to be related to the business. They want to locate there, and they're going to be able to find somebody to get in there. So...
I would love to just see, like, flexibility with that undetermined space, with the type of business that might go in there. I know. I mean, just that, you know, we want it to be, you know, attractive to a variety of people, not just people building a home, or, you know, like the neighbor was saying, somewhere that you might go. It's not going to be a deli, but, you know, somewhere that might be just, you know, it's ideally like a walkable area. So...
Yeah, we'll see. I mean, I don't... Yes, Michael? Well, and to Rebecca's point, I mean, if it did become a use that was more intensive, then that could be a stress on the parking, if the parking were cut back. So that could have a limiting factor on what that space might be. Yeah. But generally, I think it's a very nice project. I think the scale of the building works really well there. The use, the mixed use, so, you know, I think it's very well done. And again, my only concern was at the back of the property. And if that can be addressed, then I'm happy with the rest of it.
Well...
Yes, go ahead.
Perhaps there's some middle ground on the parking requirement. This is so weird to be arguing to try to make less parking, but maybe there's some middle ground. Maybe 30 is potentially not enough. I'm skeptical. I still think it's enough, especially with the alternating use of space between the residents and the customers. But something between 30 and 42.
Yeah.
If 30's not quite enough.
One thing you got to keep in mind is that there's going to be guest parking for those apartment tenants as well. A lot of times, especially for the two-bedroom apartments, you probably have at least two cars for those tenants. And then if they have, they're empty nesters, they have kids coming over, drop the kids off with the grandparents to watch them. Sometimes that added parking is needed, so.
Yeah. I think some of that is in those parks, is considered in those parking requirements when you say for a studio or something, one and a half unit spaces, I think.
Yes, Michael? Yeah, and I'm not against having less parking. I think you have to look at how the site works, though, too, and what makes sense. I mean, you know, the four spaces at the back would be fairly easy to drop off, and you'd still have the ability to turn and get, you know, in the way it's set. But as you start moving that forward, you start losing kind of a higher amount of parking spaces, because you have to retain that aisle. So, you know, realistically, you know, those four would seem like, you know, that might be a...
That'd be all right with me.
A compromise.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, to your point, Mem, just to even have more green space, I think would be nice.
May I?
Yes.
Maybe something that we could look at to be responsive to this discussion is those four spaces along the south property line. Maybe we can keep those in a turf condition and landscape those, but reserve the right in the future, should the demand be higher than we anticipate, to utilize those and pave them in the future, should they be needed for parking. So maybe that would address both sides here.
I have to let staff comment on that. That's administratively. We can even do that.
They're not required parking spaces, because they're over the minimum requirement.
Yep.
So, I mean, if that was a condition the commission wanted to consider.
Okay. I'm just saying administratively, it'd be... Okay. All right. Okay. Anything else? I just want to compliment the applicants again. I thought, when I saw the sign go up and at that site, I'm like, boy, there's an opportunity here. And I think you guys made the most of the opportunity. It's probably the optimal use in my mind. And how you did it is also very well done. So compliments on that.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Okay, structure of motion. Okay, now, structure of motion.
Do we need?
Oh, yeah, we need three motions.
Yeah, three separate motions. One for the comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan is the first one, as always.
And then one for the two variations? And then one for the site plan review? Is that the way it would go? Or one for each variation?
You should have four motions.
Four motions. Okay, I'll take a shot at the first one anyway. Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the comprehensive plan from single-family residential attached and single-family residential to general commercial for the property located at 122 and 130 East State Street.
Second, Slivka.
Moved and, moved and, did you have a comment? Okay. Please do that before, if you had a comment, before we second it. Moved and seconded, okay. Anna, please call the roll.
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Mataskill.
Mataskill, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye.
Okay, ready for another one?
I am ready for another one. We got four. Let's go for our roll.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a variation from Section 11-4A-11 to allow a maximum interior side yard setback of 28 feet instead of the required eight feet for the property 122 and 130 East State Street.
Oh, yeah, we should take this. It's a good point. Yep, we should take the zoning map for next because we have to actually.
Zoning is next, okay.
Adopt the zoning standard required, so, for the variation. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a zoning map amendment from D-MHR Mixed High Density Residential District to D-CM Commercial Mixed Use District for the property at 122 and 130 East State Street.
Slivka, second.
Moved and seconded. Anna, please call the roll.
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Mataskill.
Mataskill, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye. All right. Now, you did the variation.
Okay.
And just make sure you include both. You can include both variations.
Oh, I can do both of them?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve variations from Section 11-4A-11 to allow a maximum interior side yard setback of 28 feet instead of the required eight feet, and a maximum street yard setback of 22 feet instead of the required 15 feet for the properties located at 122 and 130 East State Street.
Slivka, second.
Moved and seconded. Anna, call the roll again.
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Mataskill.
Mataskill, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye.
Okay, now, the next one is where you said to include any modifications.
The mods, yeah.
Okay, so I would like to include a parking modification. Are there other modifications or disagreement about that one?
There's a condition, just a condition of approval, yeah.
The landscaping at the, at the south end.
What about it?
Well, I think, I think it's, this was subject to final landscape approval.
So, yeah, so they, they've met our requirements for landscaping. If you want to impose additional landscaping, it would need to be a condition.
You know, shifting that snow storage area and adding landscaping on the south part of the parcel.
Okay, so, relocating. Where was the snow storage going to go?
Somewhere not there.
Somewhere else, okay. Relocating snow storage and adding landscaping.
Okay. Okay, we're going to have to hear from the applicant on this, so.
Okay.
Yeah, if we could invite Jim up here as well. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page and we get this right collectively. So along this south property line, that's where we, ideally, we're going to put the snow storage. We're going to put the six-foot fence. And what we'd like to do is we'd like to install a row of landscaping adjacent to that fence that still gives us room to push that snow in there as well, so we could do both. So if we're moving the snow storage, that's going to create other kind of operational issues for us. But I think all can be accommodated along that south property line, the fence, the additional landscaping, and keep it for snow storage.
I would agree. And so, just a thought, if we're thinking about reserving the installation of these four spaces at some future date, if it's required. But for right now, we would just remove those four spaces. We could add the additional landscaping along the, to the north of the six-foot wooden fence. But leave that area a little bit less encumbered by landscape materials so that the snow could be piled up there.
Yeah.
And also that perhaps the pets could use that as their area to frolic and do what they need to do.
Be a little nicer than out in front of the street.
Right. So that would, that would be, you know, you're talking.
Yeah, you need a place to pile the snow. You can't have plantings in there. You'll bury them and wreck them, and, yeah.
And then we could just show that as, you know, like a heavy dash for future installation if, if there's a need for it, and then design the site accordingly to accommodate that.
Yeah, it's a good compromise. What does the commission think about that? Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me. Michael, what about the snow storage thing?
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's okay? Okay. So now we're not relocating the snow storage. We're adding landscaping. And. And we would have 38 parking spaces with four reserved if needed.
And ma'am, I think we have to include the six-foot fence.
And a six-foot fence, okay. Additional landscaping, six-foot fence. And you talked about trees, too. Do we need to, trees that would be higher than the fence? Do we need to add that? You mentioned something about trees higher than the fence.
What we would do is we would work with staff to come up with the landscape plan that they're comfortable with. Certainly, we want these materials to grow higher than the fence or they'd have no value. So we're definitely willing to cooperate on that, come up with the landscape package you're comfortable with. And on the condition for the fence, our landscape plan already shows a six-foot fence, so it'd be a prerogative.
Sorry, Sean.
So we don't need that?
For that, so we don't need that? Okay. All right.
Maybe I've got it now.
I think so.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the site plan for the property at 122 and 130 East State Street for a proposed mixed-use development with the following conditions. There will be additional landscaping along the fence to be located at the south property line, as shown in the plan. That there will be 38 approved parking spaces at this time, and space for four additional spaces can be built as needed at a later date. That work?
That works. I think that's it.
Mataskill, second.
Moved and seconded. Anna, please call the roll.
Evans.
Evans, aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Mataskill.
Mataskill, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye. I think that includes, we got them all. Okay. Matt, what's the next step?
Yeah, so the next step will be city council. That will be Monday, October 2nd. Like the other applicants, I'll send you guys kind of all the info after, or tomorrow sometime. And then if that date doesn't work, we can always find another date as well.
Thank you. We appreciate all the great comments, and I think it ended in a great result, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thanks for coming. All right. So we have public comment? Public comment? Any, any additional public comment? And it would only be, it'd only be you. So you're the only public present.
So, I'm actually talking to a builder.
Ma'am, just go to the microphone, please, because we're actually on air, so they can't hear you.
I'm actually talking to a builder next week.
Oh.
So who, who do I approach when it comes time?
You got to talk to the staff, so.
Huh?
The staff. These, David, this, Matt in particular.
Do you guys have a phone number? It's just easy to ask in person while I'm here.
Yeah, you can just contact the community development department. I don't know the, our phone number off the top of my head.
It's 630232.
630232.
0818.
0818? Okay.
Yeah, and either Jesse or I will be able to help you out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I don't think there's any other public comment, so. Matt? What else we got?
So just, just a couple items for me. The first one, so our next meeting is going to be September 28th. We just have one item on the agenda right now, and it is for some proposed text amendments from the community development department in regards to electric vehicles. So that will be coming forward for that meeting. And then just one other note, the Venture Park project will be going before city council on October 23rd is the date that we have kind of tentatively set right now with them.
And that's what we heard, that's what we did last time?
That was last, yeah, that was last meeting's agenda, correct.
I don't have anything to offer, I mean. They're moving on.
Good, move to a chair.
Thanks. Thank you, ma'am.